And welcome, and I want to thank the pastor. This church has always given back to the community on Cotton Street in a lot of different ways. And I think we're fortunate here because as we rebuild our neighborhoods, it's going to take churches like this and people like you to keep Reading strong. Tonight's meeting is something that I've probably waited for, for at least five years, if not longer than that. And knowing that there's people here in the audience, how many of you really believe we're going to repave Cotton Street? Okay. We're not quite all on the same page yet, okay? And I understand why you feel that way, because it's been a topic that's been discussed. There have been issues, and we all have gone through a lot of pain, both us and our automobiles, in what Cotton Street's been like for the last five years. There's still a lot of outstanding issues. The city's working with the Public Utilities Commission and UGI around the issue of the gas meters, and that's been a real tough one. But the good news is because of the commitment of the city and the fact that we have budgeted for the repaving of Cotton Street, it's now going to happen, and sooner than you believe. Okay? And I know you guys... What did I offer you, Joe? Okay, okay, so both are chosen. So I think, and I'm glad everyone has a sense of humor, because this has been painful. And just a personal story, I think the thing that really made me realize how bad the street was is when I had just come home from minor surgery, and my husband drove up Cotton Street, and I could barely stand it. It was so painful, okay? So the fact that this is happening is good news. What I'd like to do, though, is use this meeting as a springboard for continued meetings. So, well, at the end, I'll let you know when our next meeting date's going to be. But now, so you have the information you need to know and all those questions, I'm going to turn it over to Ralph Johnson, who is our Acting Director of Public Works, and he'll give you a lowdown together with the contractors.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We thank the church for giving us a place here, and we commend Marcia for all she's done to get this project to the point right. You're probably going to have some questions and comments tonight that probably their details we haven't quite worked through yet. So we're probably going to have some good feedback from you that'll help us pull the details together and make this project a success for the city and for the neighborhood here. And we appreciate all of you coming out, and we're looking forward to your input and feedback. I think the first and most important part, if you're ready here, is to have the contractor explain the schedule and the plan of paving here, and how we see traffic going, because I think that's the most critical thing here, is how do we deal with traffic and stuff. I will say the city is planning to do some street sweeping here before the project starts so that we have the street in good order for the contractor. So at this, turn it over.
Thank you. My name is Dave Powers. If you have any questions or you don't understand anything where I'm going, just let me know. Okay, all right, there you go. Thank you. I'm not sure if everybody got this. This was our tentative schedule that was listed on the website. I think the pastor made some copies and put it back there with dates and everything. But just to give you an overview of this job, the plan that the city has and that we're contracted for, we're going to come in and mill an inch and a half off the existing surface. We're going to then check the surface to see if there's any base repair needed. At that time, we'll perform base repair. After that's all done, then we're going to pave it. I know that sounds simple and quick. Hopefully, the job is simple and quick, but to be honest with you, there will be some inconvenience to you guys. When we do the milling, what we're going to do is we're going to take traffic going from Ninth Street up to Eighteenth Street and send it down Mulberry. Yonberg, sorry. Yonberg, Fifteenth. We'll go from Ninth to Fifteenth, then they'll come back up, and we'll have flaggers there flagging in both directions. Traffic coming down will be able to get through. And again, there'll be some inconvenience while we're doing this, but that's basically how the milling operation's been at work. When we get to the actual paving, we're going to try to separate it into two jobs. We're going to go from Ninth Street to Fifteenth Street, which will be a complete closure at that time. And that would be for our final paving, and that would be a two-day operation. And just so don't skip through it, at every night, every night, the street will be open for you guys to park on. It'll be a daytime inconvenience. We're going to post 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., no parking. So after that, you guys will be able to park on the street. So after we complete the section from Ninth to Fifteenth, we're going to go from Fifteenth up to Nineteenth Street. Again, that would be closed for those two days while we're doing that. And then the project should be over. We're hoping two weeks to get this project done. There's a lot of unknowns because of the base repair, how much there's going to be, what we're going to see when we get that inch and a half off. We're hoping two weeks. Also, if you look at the schedule, it has a July 28 start. We did issue a schedule to the city that had an early start and a late start. Our early start was the 28th. Our late start is the 30th. We experienced two days of rain this week that pushed us back two days. So our start right now is July 30th, which is a Wednesday. So we are back a little. We're hoping to gain some time going through, but... Basically, in a nutshell, that's the project for you guys. I think Thursday's trash day. You guys notify, I think the city is going to talk to most of the haulers, let them know they'll be able to get in. Again, there's going to be some inconvenience, some delays, but they'll be able to get in and pick up your trash. We're going to work with you guys. If an emergency vehicle needs to get in, it's going to be able to get in. It's just going to be, there's going to have to be some patience on both sides. Is that for Ralph or for me?
I live in 1700 blocks. My one question is, now, it's just all that they're going to be digging up here again. Digging a hole in the street, now you guys are going to supposedly pave, cover it up. How many times must they dig a hole in the street after you pave it to say, well, okay, we've got gas now, or we don't have gas, or whatever? Why do they have to dig that, dig this whole street up after you fix it? That I don't understand.
Well, we have reminded UGI that we're coming in and we're doing the paving, and that they need to finish any last repairs they have before we pave. So you may see some flurry of activity over the next week for them to wrap up whatever projects they have scheduled.
It's really difficult when you have an aging city with repairs that you cannot predict. What the utilities have been asked to do is finish all their work now that they were aware of, okay, and get it done. But we never know when there might be a water main break, something coming up. What we have done, though, is we've strengthened the city ordinance that makes those utilities that have to do street cuts or have to do work on the street responsible for repairing it. And that's what we're going to have to monitor. We learned a lot about things that didn't work right, and so council looked at what we needed to do, because we don't want the city to have to be responsible for constantly repaving when utilities are the ones that are doing the work. So it's a real balancing act, but I think it's a good question, too. Well, the other reality is, after the work was done by the Water Authority and UGI, the street was never repaired correctly. This is to get it to where it needs to be, okay? But like I said, that doesn't mean that in the future, there might not be something happening. I mean, look at the water main breakout on 61. That happened right after they repaved that whole section of 61, okay, and had to dig it up again. So it's an ongoing problem.
We, I want to give Linda a lot of credit, the city clerk. She was a part of a team that has recently, Tim, you were a part of that, too, strengthened our street cut permit to deal with those issues. And what it really does is hold those people that have to cut the street right after a paving job. It really puts the pressure on them to repave the street properly. Also, I do want to point out that some of the financing of this project, this paving project, did come through UGI. So, you know, it's in their best interest not to ruin what they helped pay for. So we think, we think we have a good plan there. Perfect? No, there's, like Marcia said, with an older city and older infrastructure, there's no perfect arrangement, but we think we have a good arrangement. Also, the base work that we talked about is, after we mill, if we see any bad base work or missing base work from the, you know, from the previous utility cuts or something, that will be dealt with before they do the paving job. Looks like I got to buy you a beer, too, I guess. Okay, next.
I got quite a few. Parking, Leverage Street is clean twice a week. Is the city going to give tickets out to people that park?
I'm not following you. Can you explain a little?
North Park is clean twice a week, one on 30th, one on 31st, opposite sides.
Okay, so you're, I see what you're saying. You're going to have to park there during the project. Those are the kind of points, Tim, can you take a note for me there, please? Those are the kind of points that I appreciate you pointing out, and we'll work on that with Parking Authority, and we'll address that. That's a good point.
Another question. Leverage Street is one-way going north. Now, we live at a 400-block electric door. If the city sort of permitted from down Yonberg and come up, both south of Leverage Street, it'll turn to rock.
You mean during the project here?
It's going to be blocked off.
We really, we really can't, we really can't change the street direction. That's, there's a risk of accidents at that time.
Well, then, how are we going to park in a 400-block unless we back in or something?
Well, they're, you're going to let them cross.
If they have cotton tree block, we can get in the 400.
The intersections will be accessible. Again, there could be delays when we're going through with the milling machine, or when we're in the paving operation, there could be delays going through. But you will be able to cross over at 10th, 11th, 12th, all the streets that do go across.
But I like to park close to the house. And another one, Cotton Street's got a crown on it. I found out I just went over, I tried into the curb, so you've got to try to level it off for me?
No, we, some crown has to be there, but this is strictly a resurfacing project. It's not a reconstruction project. So the existing, the existing crown and the existing arrangement will stay the same. We're just taking an inch and a half off and replacing it with new paving.
I realize quarter time, it's going to be, you hit your brakes, it's going to go like to the curb, one way or another.
I understand. There's also some need for the crown for proper drainage and stuff, but we do not have the plan to resurface only. We do not have a plan to reconstruct the street. So I hear you, sir, but I got to tell you, we're resurfacing. That's what we have budgeted, that's what we have contracted. We do not have a plan to reconstruct Cotton Street.
Can you try to level it off for me?
No, no, I'm sorry, we can't, sir.
Now, see, you have Ninth Street blocked off. Cotton Street is Yonberg. I've been a piece, you're going to be paving that first, so we can go from Ninth Street up to Laurel Street down to Ninth and Yonberg.
That's not the city, that's UGI at this time, and we'll have to make sure they're out of there by the time this project starts.
If they're digging up, they got to fill plates there. It would make sense if they could repave that one block.
That's not, that's not in the, this project, it's not in this project budget, and they will have to, they will have to comply with the, with the street cut ordinance that we now have in place with their patches and that type of thing. Yeah, I say, we're well aware of the Ninth Street work, and UGI is working on that, and we're working with them to try to get them to hurry up and finish that, because you'll need, you'll need Ninth Street. Yes, I understand.
And I might say something else, but it's a big problem. Let, oh, I understand UGI did pay for this. I talked to one of the guys that will work in here, and then they gave, ready, you would pick, or you don't tell them.
Yes, the UGI has been part of the financing to get this street repaved. Yes, they have. They are a portion of it. That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
That's correct. That's correct. Next.
I see that UGI is going to be responsible for most of this, but it says that the city is, could find a share of the cost. We as taxpayers, are we going to be financially responsible for any of this?
No, if you're asking if there's any, going to be any special assessment to the local neighborhood, no. No, no, no. We're also using what's called liquid fuels revenues, and this is money we get from the state to do road repairs and things like that, and that's part of your, your gas tax. So this money is already earmarked for this project.
I'm sticking here.
I got a couple of questions in bearing. First is, I'm referencing handicap parking with Parking Authority. Are they going to readdress parking spaces after this is done? Like, on 12th, on the far end, there's actually four parking spots that are handicapped in a row. They said they don't want to change that, but, I mean, that was actually established when we received a permanent parking space from them. Are they going to change that or not?
No, we do not have plans to change any parking in this project. It's a repaving project. Each one of those has been applied for and approved now, and they have to renew each year.
Yes.
So now, if there's one that, that is, is no longer needed, then we need to be notified of that, and we will contact the permitted person and confirm that and remove that space. But right now, there is no plans to change any parking arrangements on Cotton Street.
Will the curb stones reflect that after the paving is done?
The curb markings?
Yes.
No, we should, you should not be affecting the curb part. That shouldn't be affected. They'll build close to the curb and clean up right up to the edge of the curb, but they should not be interfering with any of those existing curb markings.
Yeah, and which, back to the curbs a little bit. Some drainage coming down off the hill, there's piping that goes right into the curb. Level the street now, there are like, some of these pipes are actually under the level. Is that going to be re-corrected with the milling, or is that going to be, I mean, changed at all?
Yeah, with, within reason, we will be dealing with that, but we can't guarantee that each and every one will be perfect, because we have to keep the grade steady through the job so we get proper street drainage.
I know the drainages are so poor coming down off the Chatham Terrace, around the corner, I mean, go down, come down further here, it's just like, a couple pipes here that allow for drainage, and they're half covered by the street as it is.
Yep, and we can't guarantee we'll make it down to the bottom of it again, but we won't make it any worse. That's, that's the strategy.
And just a quick question about curbing. Some of the curbs, there are no curbs. I mean, they're level, sidewalks are level right now in the street, whether they're brick or whether they're slate, the old slate borders that were put up. Is there any way that's going to be re-corrected or rebalanced?
This, this project does not include curbing work or parking or anything like that. It is a street resurfacing project. So those, those issues will be the same as they are now, I'm sorry to tell you.
Just two quick other questions. One about the milling. I know there's an area right in front, we live at the far end of 12th, there's a dip in the road caused. I know there's nothing underneath this general pavement. When they did the water, water cleanup, and then they extra gas, the UGI came through, they actually found wood piping there. They were supposed to go back and redig that up. They said they had it on their paperwork, they never came back. But the water, water lines going into some of those houses are actually wood pipes. I don't know, you know, we're saying UGI is going to finish. We're going to turn around and have the water company come back, what, a year from now? We, like you said.
Are you saying the live water?
Yeah, there's live water lines that have wood piping.
That are wood piping? I will talk to Rawa between now and the job start, but that should, that should be corrected before this project goes on.
They did try to correct one pipe there. They actually cut it out, replaced it, but back across Main Street, they couldn't replace the whole thing.
Okay, let us check with...
And they said it was actually several pieces in that area that was all wood piping.
I know a lot of the older parts of Reading and in some of our surrounding, you know, sister communities, that there used to be wooden mains, but to my knowledge, all of them have been abandoned. So we will check with Rawa on that, and if there's a need to address that, to get them to move quickly. I appreciate that heads up.
It's created a washout underneath the pavement now, and you can start, you can see it sinking over with the heavy rains. You can actually see the cars dipping in that area because of, it's just pavement that is, is actually hollow area underneath it. So I'm saying, when they mill up that inch and a half, they're going to expose that. Basically, there is no base underneath there.
Okay, we'll touch base with Reading Area Water Authority, and we appreciate that heads up.
Last quick question I have, it goes back to handicap. I park on the outside, I have handicaps parking, but my parents, especially my mother, I have to go across and pick her up on the side we live on, on the outside. I have to do that, the only way, she can't, she doesn't have the strength to cross the street back and forth. Is that something that can easily work out with and so forth?
You mean during the construction project? We, the, I mean, these gentlemen here and their company have a great reputation, and we were happy that they were the lowest responsible bidder. I believe they'll work with you as best as they can. We will have to watch the safety for your mother, obviously, with big machinery and all that moving around, but they will have a person responsible for the job in charge, and that person will, will help make sure that you can get your mother in and out safely.
I want to work with, same as I do with UGI and stuff, they actually stop the, you know, work, at least allow me to get in there real quick and get out, but, you know.
Yeah, there'll be times of temporary inconvenience. Again, there might be a half an hour where you can't get in or out, but if you know you have to get out, you come out and mention it to our site foreman, he'll make sure that, they'll do everything they can to get you out. Like Ralph said, our biggest concern, we want to give you guys a great job at the end of the day, but it's the safety of everyone here, everyone out there, the safety of our guys, and just the safety of the traveling public. So we'll do everything we can to help you out, but there will be some inconvenience.
Last quick thing.
You had three last questions now, you know that.
Got to be a comment. I mean, the speed is not his problem on this road. I mean, I know the police do their best and everything, but, I mean, we can start even later tonight, starting after we leave here. There'll be a racing with motorcycles and everything. Once this road gets better, it's just going to make it easier for them to go, race stop signs back and forth, you know.
We understand there are some streets in the city that have that problem, and it, you're right, it does become a bigger challenge once you have a nicer, nicer street, but I am counting on the fact that the nicer street will be a counter to those, to those drivers, and I'll pick on the younger people, usually it's them, and their driving habits. If it gets too bad between Marcia and I, we can touch base with PD and ask them to, you know, maybe up their patrol a little bit more on Cotton Street during the first couple of weeks after this is done to, to try and curb, curb some speeding and keep it under control.
Yeah, let's, just, we'll get back to you in a minute.
I think they're pretty quick questions. One is, can I take some of these papers for my neighbors who couldn't make it here?
Yes.
Okay. The other is, on the evenings where the entire blocks will be closed, are you going to open them for parking?
Yes, seven to five is our plan to close, so after that, we should open up, and you'll be able to park.
Okay, so that's even the two days that it's...
Correct.
Okay. And then the last one is, I have a private trash hauler, and I know you mentioned for the city on Thursday. Is it my responsibility to contact my trash hauler to let them know about these couple of weeks?
That's a good question, and I think we have a responsibility. Tim, I'm counting on you to take my notes from here. But through our, through our city solid waste division, we will reach out to all the haulers and make sure they have this schedule and let them know they need to get in early in the morning, get their route done on Cotton Street and move on during Thursday. Good point. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Yep, go ahead.
All right. I want to ask the contractor, are you going to video the old slate curbing on Cotton Street that once you begin to mill, okay, there's no more damage to that slate curbing than what there already is?
That's a great question, but yes, our plan is to mill the, or to film the entire project, we'll video everything, walk up and down, and it just comes from history and experience that that's the best thing to do for everybody.
And I have one more for Ralph. Ralph, I have worked for the Water Department for 34 years, recently retired. I have done many, many, many state highway occupancy permits, okay? When is the city going to adopt the policy that the state has when it comes to protecting their streets? And one of them is, if you open up so many street cuts within so many feet, it requires an automatic mill and overlay.
Actually, what we were talking about a little earlier, and it's since you retired from what you're telling us here, we have strengthened the, the street cut ordinance, and if there's, and there is specifications, if there's so many cuts within such a distance, it's got to be, you know, a lane repave or a total street repave. And again, I compliment Linda and Tim here, who were on that committee and put that together. Thank you. Thank you. If we can bring it back up to this gentleman, he had a, he had a follow-up question.
Yeah, I got a question. Who paid both of them? They did an excellent job on that. Why could they have repaved Cotton Street like that?
I'm not close to that, that project. I'm sorry. I, as acting duty, I wasn't involved in 12th and Spruce, so I can't answer that.
Like, I say...
I can... Well, I'm hoping, and I'm counting on the fact that when this job's done, you're going to say that this was even a better one, because I'm counting on them here. I'm putting the pressure on you now.
I got two questions. First, I got a point. First, I believe it when I see it. But the second point, when this, when this started five years ago, Rawa had us up to 16th and Hawk School, and they told us, when they're done, they're going to repave, not repatch. But then UGI comes in. Now you're saying UGI's paying it and the city's paying. Why ain't Rawa paying? They're making, they're making their money that they needed to open the street up for to sell to Antietam and all them, and then they're not having to pay.
Okay. We, you are correct that Rawa is not part of the financing plan. It is UGI, and it is the liquid fuels money that we get through the state and the city. I was not part of the team that did the financing plan, and I cannot answer your question why Rawa did not have to be a part. your question why Rawa did not have to be a part of it. Okay. Okay. Did you, you had a microphone earlier. Did you want to? Oh, you have it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. First off, I want to say is I think it's really redundant for all those pipes that are sitting out front because we have signs coming around talking about make Reading beautiful with those gas things out front of everybody's homes. I think it looks really retarded. And I'm, I, I'm, I'm sorry I have to say it that way, but it does. It does not make Reading look beautiful. Okay. Now we're talking about the streets. Now we need to start talking about the sidewalks because, um, with a lot of the sidewalks, since they tore up the streets to do that, they had to tear up the sidewalks. They're not fixing the sidewalks right away. There's a lot of dips and everything. There's people with strollers. There are people with carts. There's people with walkers. When are they going to start fixing the sidewalks? There's patrons not, there's all, there's people that are, that are just walking and then there's drivers. You got to understand, you got to look, you got to look towards the people like me. I'm a young person, yes, but we got the older people that have walkers and canes and all that. You need to start fixing the sidewalks as long, as long as well as the streets also. Once you tear that up, cover it back up right away again. You have those little pebbles in there? The kids are in there digging those pebbles out and it's making divots in the sidewalks for the people that really needs to be on the sidewalk.
We, uh, I'll look into that. Um, I was not aware that, that we had the, the sidewalk problem here. I was aware of some of the curbing issues. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning you.
There's, there's, I mean, you can just look right up and down the streets and you can see it. The sidewalks are not covered. I mean, you're worried about the streets. I can, I, I understand, I understand with the streets, but you got to understand for the, just the regular people that do walkers, do canes and everything else like that. And just me myself, I've tripped over a couple of them.
I understand.
I consider myself as a really healthy young lady, but, but you know, I can still trip over that too. Now, if I fall, I can't sue anybody because it's not, who, who am I going to, who am I going to get money for?
Do you want to work with them?
I can't get to work.
There's an old man. I don't know. He cannot walk. It's tough for his feet. Now he cannot walk sidewalks. It's like this lady said, he has to walk out in the street.
Okay. One of the, uh, pieces that's very important here tonight is to separate the issue with the repaving from some of the ongoing problems of UGI. The city, uh, council has been very much aware of this. We actually met with, uh, some of our state, uh, representatives, including Representative Calidron, officials from UGI, officials from the Public Utility Commission. We took a van tour down Cotton Street, took pictures, took pictures of the sidewalks. As city council, we are not pleased and we feel that UGI has not fulfilled their responsibility to return this neighborhood to the condition it is. And we also have a lot of questions about why they chose the type of meters that they chose. Once we started to have this dialogue, it became more and more complicated. And this is, I feel like a dog, you know, with a bone that I'm not going to let go of here. And you can ask Linda. Linda's been really great at, uh, keeping after this. This has been one of the most difficult things I've had to do on city council is deal with the public utility because UGI is under the direction of the state. So, we need to use and have as many voices as we can to be able to say, this isn't right what they did as far as not fixing up the payments. Okay. The meters, some of them are in dangerous locations. Uh, there's still a lot of outstanding issues. What I'd like to do is keep the conversation about the meters to a separate meeting and work with Linda as far as some strategies go.
If people have problems or complaints about the sidewalks not being repaired, or if you have questions about UGI wanting to move your meter or where they moved your meter, just call me at the council office and I can give you the number for the PUC regulator. 610-655-6204. And they should ask for Linda.
And the more information we get, the more we hear from you, the better positioned we are at a pressure. And like I said, State Representative Calidron has been working with us on it. So, we have a lot of allies, but it's been a tough battle.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Okay. What is the reason for those meters being out there anyways?
They're, uh, you're, you're not going to.
Seriously, no, because I'm a, I'm a, the reason why I'm saying this is because we, there was an accident out on 10th Street. A car hit a porch. Now, one of those meters sitting out there like that and a car would run into a porch, say somewhere out here, is that going to ignite the gas?
Okay.
They said it's not supposed to, but anything can happen.
First of all, I'll, I'll try to answer your question, but I need to get this meeting back on track to the paving of Cotton Street and, and we'll cover, as Marcia said, we'll cover the meters on a different day.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying, but I just wanted to point out a second. There's more than that happened more than once. It crossed my, actually crossed, crossed my porch, hit my neighbor's meter. It did shut off. They have safeties that will shut them off automatically, but it came within a matter of moments for UGI to come out and they said it would have been about a half hour later. They probably would have been leaking the whole neighborhood, neighborhood would have been evacuated because it disrupted. And they said they were going to put cages on it.
Folks, I'm, I appreciate this. I am not UGI. Marcia's not UGI. We, we're not here about the meters tonight. While we do understand your concerns, as Linda and Marcia said, the city council is, is, um, working with the PUC to deal with this, but actually those meters were moved in response to a regulatory compliance to get them out of your house. They, they wanted to get things out of your house so that if there's a leak, it's not in your basement, it doesn't blow up your house. Now, that does create other safety problems, but I do not want to get this meeting into a gas meter meeting tonight. It's, it's about the paving project and, and what we're going to do to, to make our street better.
Okay. It wasn't regulated. It might be regulated. That's why UGI is doing this because it might be.
We, we understand all that. So, can we, do we have any other questions about the paving project on, on Cotton Street?
We, we, our, our start date now is planned for the 30th of July. Again, we're hoping that three days we get the milling done. Once we get it exposed, the base repairs is unknown. We could have two days of base repair. We could have eight days of base repair. So, that's going to, um, play a lot on the project, but then the actual paving, once we get past base repair is another four days and all that's weather pending. Um, we're hoping to get in and out of here in three weeks with base repair, milling and final overlay if the weather cooperates. Our drop dead date is the 20th, 25th? Well, that, yeah, that, because we want to be out, we got to be done before school starts.
Any, any other questions? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Since you're doing all this paving and stuff like that, what about, um, public transportation? Are you just going to let them know ahead of time of what's going to happen and?
We'll, we'll double check. That's a good point. We'll double check that. Uh, we believe they have been notified of, of the project and, and arrangements that need to be made.
I mean, I need to take public transportation to get to work and stuff like that. And I don't, I need to know where to, to be able to get picked up at and everything like that. Are you just going to let them know ahead of time?
We'll, 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 we'll re-follow up on that. That's a good point. We thank you very much. As part of what this meeting's about is to get those kind of issues and make sure that we're on top of them. So, we thank you for that. We'll double check with BARDA. Again, their schedule, this, this is a part that, that we're going to have to work around. Their schedule might get moved some until heavy machinery is out of the road and, and so you'll have to be, you, they may not be right on time. Um, that's part of the problem with doing these kind of projects for those few days. That's right. They have one, they only have the one direction now.
That's the reason why I'm, that's my question for that is because I need to get to work. I'm not worried about coming back up. I'm worried about just going home.
Okay. Yes, we'll, we'll double check with BARDA and, and, um, Tim, it'd probably be best we make sure that, that you folks have a chance to talk to them. Thank you for that point. That's a good point. Anybody else?
I have a loud one. He tells me I have a loud one. Okay. If we put the trash out and the city can't come through right away, we're not going to get a fine for having that trash out longer than what it's supposed to be.
Okay. Thursdays is trash day. If they, if because of the construction, your private hauler or your city hauler, um, is unable to get your trash, um, they're probably going to, you're probably going to have to wait a day, you know, wait, wait till they come back around because.
We can leave it out and we won't get a fine.
Well, I don't think you can leave it out there for a week. I don't think that's going to work.
No, we're not for a whole week.
Yeah.
Or don't let it out there. Now, she's asking you what to do with it. We're not going to, once we drag it out into the street, because we're both handicapped.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, and we have one hell of a time getting this, I'm sorry, excuse my language, but we have one heck of a time, walking and all that. And then, not only that, but then like we stop to get in and out of the house for, uh, double parking because we're handicapped. Now, I don't understand why the cop can't see or the, whoever can't see that there's a handicap license plate on my pickup truck. Now, we're taking groceries. We're not sitting there for a half an hour like people do out here, 45 minutes. And I don't understand how their batteries can last that long, but anyway, they do. I park out there and I run the risk of having to, uh, get a ticket for double parking. I don't think that's fair because we're both handicapped. We, and we live on the same side, the side that's, there's no parking.
I got that.
And when, the one answer that I got maybe a couple of years ago was, well, you carry it. You carry it. You carry it from the side, from the street. Now, there's no parking on the other side of the street except for three blocks down. Now I got to carry my groceries three blocks up and walk back down, get three more bags or whatever I can carry. And it just don't make sense. That we're, that we're not getting checked. I mean.
Trash was out for.
Yeah, this winter was a tough winter, wasn't it?
Because of the snow. Yeah. And all I'm saying is if it has to sit out there a day or two.
We'll, we'll talk to codes. We'll talk to the solid waste. That's a good point.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, we have about five good points that came out tonight that, that we can work on.
Because my, my stuff is out there a day or two longer than what it was supposed to be.
We, we'll talk to codes and we will talk to the solid waste department. Thank you for that point. What's that, sir?
They could put that out in the paper. They do on holidays when they're going to pick up, they move it up to date. If there's going to be a problem somehow, they should get it put in the paper to let it know.
But we're not planning to change your collection day or anything for this. Yep.
We don't want to get a fine.
Yeah, we understand. We'll talk to codes and we'll talk to solid waste.
I don't.
I understand. Okay. This lady back here would like a microphone.
Would it be possible to have them come after 5 o'clock?
Um, that, that probably is not practical, but trying to get them out early in the morning, I think is, is the more practical, but we'll, we'll, we don't have the answers. I'm, I, while I oversee solid waste, I, I do not operate it day to day. So, let me talk to the solid waste team and, and we'll talk to the codes people and, and we'll address these issues.
I, I know it's been a long time since you've seen Cotton Street repaved, but many of the streets in the city have been repaved without really much incident at all. Court Street was the last one I did. Burkeholder Paving has done a lot of this and I have all the confidence in the world that they're going to be able to get this done without really any incidents. Uh, Davon, maybe you can speak to the fact that you're going to work with the trash haulers. There's also emergencies. There's a lot of things that can happen on Cotton Street that the, that Burkeholder is used to doing. They've done a lot of streets in a lot of different cities and maybe you can shed some light on that.
We want to make this painless as we can for you guys, but, um, with us starting Wednesday, trash pickups Thursday, we're still milling. So, they'll be able to have access. They'll be, I, um, they might have to come down from 19th and work their way down to get the trash, but they should be able to get it. And, and we want them to get it out so it's not blowing on the street and it makes more of a mess for us to clean up. So, we will be working with, we'll work with the trash. We'll work with, um, uh, the bus company. Um, and again, we, we want to get in here, get out, make you guys happy and, um, leave a good taste in your mouth.
They do not clean Cotton Street. No, they don't.
They're, they're, the, the city's, the city's schedule for Cotton Street, I believe, is, is like twice a year. And it's, and it's next, what's that, sir? You had three times? I thought it was only two, so.
I only see it twice a year, baby.
But anyway, we, we have it scheduled to be cleaned before this project and, um, we do not have a changed schedule, folks. We, we do have, and, and I know this isn't what you want to hear, but we do have limited staff now and, and limited machinery. And while we would love to do all the streets in a more frequent, uh, plan, um, that's not practical. The, the one thing that, and I, and I just covered this on 69 News the other night, but is, um, if you see somebody using the gutter as a trash can, you know, it's, it's not a trash can, folks. And, and then, and then it gets worse and then it goes down and clogs the catch basin and then the catch basin backed up. That, that's a topic for a different day, but we, we need to try and keep the trash out of the gutter is the trick to this all. And, and, and I, I, I can tell the people that are in here are the responsible neighbors that, you know, take care of this, but not, unfortunately, not everybody is as responsible as you folks. Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a five day thing or, and then you have the weekend off or?
Yeah, we're going to, Monday through Friday is our normal schedule. The only way we would work Saturday, like you said, we have a drop dead completion date on this. If the weather wouldn't cooperate and we're going towards the end of our contract, we might have to work a Saturday, but the plan is five days a week.
Just a quick question. Are you going to mill the entire length of Cotton Street first and then pave, or are you going to do it in sections?
Yep. We are, we're going to mill the entire length. We have a, we don't do our own milling. We subcontract that out. So, the subcontractor is going to come in and do that all at one time. After that, then we'll try to break it into two sections to do the paving.
Is traffic going to be able to go, uh, through then still after you do that?
After the milling, they will be able to travel. Well, the, the utilities will be exposed, but we'll have stuff around them to protect them, to protect vehicles, but you'll be able to drive on it each evening again. Seven to five closures.
Okay. With that, we, we want to thank everybody. We want to thank the, the church for, for hosting the, uh, the site here tonight and, uh, we thank Burkeholder for coming out and, and, uh, addressing your questions. I'm going to turn it over to Marcia for closing here.
First of all, thank you for the team from Public Works and I think, yeah, this is something we waited for and sometimes the expression is no pain, no gain. You guys have been in pain for a long time. So, what I'd like to do is schedule another meeting for August the 21st when this project will slowly be wrapping up. Does that sound like about? Okay. And then we can have a little celebration here, maybe an ice cream social and talk about some of the other, uh, issues we need to address. So, are we working with Linda to set out a flyer, 7 o'clock, August the 21st? The other thing is that I will be asking for your answers to your questions to be posted on the city website. That's probably the best way to get information out. Okay. So, if you can go online on the website. Uh, I'll also be doing a newsletter. Uh, we distribute that through the website too, right Linda? Okay. So, that, we'll be keeping up. And one of the things I'd like to be able to hear from you all at the next meeting is some of your great memories of this area of Cotton Street. Things that you really liked or do still like about East Reading because I think we need to build on that. If we're going to stay together as a community, we had, had a lot of rough bumps, literally, but we need to be able to work on the good things to keep us together. So, I look forward to seeing you on the 21st. I'll be here for a few minutes after the meeting if anyone wants to talk to me individually. Thank you very much.